Okay, it looks like we have a quorum. We'll get started. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Potemperie-Popevsky.
Here.
And Mayor Riggsby.
Here.
All present.
Now is time for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilman Daley has the honors.
Father God, we thank you for the blessing that we all have in living in a close community. Praise the Lord be with the city staff, the citizens, the citizens of this country, and the corrections. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This is the time for any oral reports from the public on any non-agenda items. I have a request from Nev Calero, San Bernardino County, about the county visioning project. Come on forward.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, residents of Loma Linda. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the San Bernardino County Vision Project. I believe some of you already have the information. But the vision project is a joint effort between the county and Sandbag. And it is a series of town hall-style workshops and web surveys that is designed to collect input and your opinions, a lot of information on the county and where you'd like to see the county go in the future. Once all this information is collected, it will create a vision plan. And that will be used as a guideline by the Board of Supervisors on where to take the county in the future, in the years to come. Though we have workshops, about over a dozen, in the month of January countywide. And in the area of the San Bernardino Valley, we have them at San Bernardino, June 19th, or January 19th. Then we have workshops in Colton, Redlands, and I think in Luscoy. There's also a link to the calendar of events for the town halls on the county website. And there's also a link to the web surveys on the county website. So I encourage everyone who's listening or watching to go ahead and please participate. Come to the town halls, take the web surveys, so that way the Board of Supervisors and the county leadership knows where you folks want the county to go in the future. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our presentation to the Citizens on Patrol members. We have two members that have decided to retire after 10 years of service, and we'll be honoring them. I'm going to, we're going to start with Lieutenant Jamson with a description of their experience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and City Council, and citizens, and all the Citizen on Patrol that are members that are here today. I'm very thankful that you're here. Can you hear me back there? Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask Jerry, Mr. Jerry Tidal, to come up here to the podium for just a couple of seconds. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about this gentleman. He's a wonderful person who's been with us now for 10 years as a volunteer with the Loma Linda unit. And he was born in Los Angeles. He received his bachelor's degree at Massachusetts Institution of Technology in Building Engineering in 1951. He became chief engineer after graduating MTI and was promoted to Vice President of Administration for Basco Steel in Pomona, California. And he worked there for a total of 33 years. In 1991, he started a company called Prefab Metal Building in Istanbul, Turkey, and stayed there for 18 months. Jerry returned to Orange County and retired from the City of Orange Police Department, where he worked as a parking control aide. He also served as the first lieutenant in the U.S. Army Reserves. He moved to Loma Linda, and in 2000, he joined the COP unit in Loma Linda and has now served for 10 years. So we asked Jerry, what was the most exciting thing that he did as a COP? And he said, "The waterman, canyon fire, evacuating citizens in danger, and building friendships." And Jerry has five children, 13 grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and he's married to his wife Bobby for 35 years. And she's here in the audience. Would you please stand, please? And I believe your daughter was here too, your daughter and your daughter's husband. In addition to being a COP for 10 years, Jerry has also volunteered for Lions Club, City of Hope, Citizen on Patrol for Riverside County Sheriff's Department. I don't know why you went over there, but that's okay. So with that, I have a few things from the Sheriff's Department. And we truly appreciate your service for 10 years. We're going to miss you. And we can't say enough about what you've done, come out on your own time, not getting paid for what you've done, and always being available when the phone rings. So with that, I have a couple of things here that I'd like to give you. First, I have a letter from Sheriff Rod Hoops. And he says, "Dear Jerry, as you retire from volunteer forces, I wish to thank you for over 10 years of service to the citizens of San Bernardino County. It is not often said, but your dedication and service is truly appreciated. Congratulations and best wishes from your friends in the Sheriff's Department. Sincerely, Rod Hoops." And in addition to that, I have a plaque that Sylvia was instrumental in putting on together here. Sylvia's back there. And it's presented to Jerry Tidal, Citizen Volunteer, Loma Linda, COP Unit 413, in appreciation of your dedication and commitment to the citizens of San Bernardino County and the Sheriff's Department for 10 years, October 19, 2000, till December 15, 2010. And she was able to mount your volunteer badge to this plaque. So congratulations on your retirement.
And before you go back, Jerry, the City of Loma Linda would like to honor you as well. We have a certificate of appreciation from the city, signed by the entire City Council, presented to Jerry Tidal in grateful appreciation and recognition of 10 years of service to the community of Loma Linda as a member of the Citizens on Patrol. And we have a City of Loma Linda pin for you to wear on your collar or wherever you choose. Come forward. If you'd like, you could give a speech, but you don't have to. Okay, no problem.
Okay, next we have Eva Sundren. And Eva has also been with us for 10 years. She came in October 2000 and is retiring at the same time as Jerry did. Eva is a very, very interesting individual. I was very surprised when I read, actually, all the things that you'd done. Eva was born in India, and she was given the opportunity to go to college in the United States. She was the first woman to graduate with a bachelor's degree in nutrition from a Tennessee college 50 years ago. Eva had an opportunity to visit Dubai, and she was asked to work with the Dubai government for the dietary department. As a chief dietitian, she assisted in building four clinics from scratch. Her responsibilities included recruiting, hiring, purchasing equipment, training and teaching, dieticians in clinics, and dietary duties. She did all this while her family was in the United States. And as a matter of fact, she quit three times to be with her family, but always returned back to Dubai. And she spent over 30 years going back and forth between the United States and Dubai. Along the way, she received one more bachelor's degree, two master's degrees, and she received her PhD in Education of Psychology from India. At 66 years old, she finally retired and permanently moved to Loma Linda. And in October 2000, she joined the COP unit back here. Besides volunteering as a COP, she was also a greeter for Walmart in Riverside for four years. And she was one of the first volunteers for the Loma Linda Senior Center. So we asked her, what was the most exciting thing that she did with the COP unit? She said patrol, being aware of her surroundings, and participating in graduating from the COP Academy, where she made new lifetime friends. She has two children, four grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and a parent called Cuckoo. So with that, we would like to give you a couple of things from the Sheriff's Department to remember us for. And again, we are truly appreciative of all the work you've done, coming out, anytime we ask you to come out, and for the patrol time that you put in as well. I have a certificate from Sheriff Rod Hoops. And that reads, "As you retire from volunteer forces, I wish to thank you for 10 years of service to the citizens of San Bernardino County. It is not often said, but your dedication and service is truly appreciated. Congratulations and best wishes from your friends in the Sheriff's Department. Sincerely, Rod Hoops." And of course, Sylvia did her thing and went out and got you a plaque. And the plaque says, "In appreciation of your dedication and commitment to the citizens of the San Bernardino County and the Sheriff's Department for 10 years, October 19, 2000, till December 15, 2010." And again, your volunteer badge is mounted to it. Congratulations on your retirement.
But before that, the City of Loma Linda would also like to give you a certificate of appreciation and a city pin that's modeled after our seal, presented to Eva Sundrajin in grateful appreciation and recognition of 10 years of service to the community of Loma Linda as a member of the Citizens on Patrol. We thank you.
So one more thing from me. I guess I haven't spoken in two years, so it's all coming out today. I thought that there was a great opportunity today for me to introduce to the mayor and to the council and to the citizens of Loma Linda, the entire Citizen on Patrol unit here at Loma Linda. And the unit consists of 20 volunteers. And they are a great group of folks that are enthusiastic, and they just come out and do everything that we ask them to do. And just a few things that this unit has been involved in. They have assisted in directing traffic at fatal accident scenes. They have worked several DUI checkpoints in the city and assisted deputies during the fires on Scotch Lane, the flooding in the city recently that we had, missing persons searches, sweep operations, and assisting with the Kids Watch Program, the extra patrol vacation or homes when citizens go on vacations, and the assist with the annual city parade. And those are just a few things that they do. Beyond that, their everyday duties are to be our eyes and ears in the city while they patrol and to basically get all the information out to our deputy sheriffs of suspicious people and vehicles and those sort of things. During year 2010 alone, the Loma Linda COP unit donated a total of 3,750 hours of volunteer work. And I think that that's a tremendous accomplishment. So I would like to start with our sergeant, who is somewhere hiding back there, okay? Our sergeant is the COP coordinator, actually the supervisor and the leader of the group, not only for Loma Linda, but also for the city grand terrace and the county area in Central Patrol, Sergeant Joe Palomino. And of course, we have our Sheriff Service Specialist, who's been with Loma Linda for eight years, and she's done a tremendous job, not only as a COP coordinator, but doing very many different duties for the city. Sylvia Beasley. And then we have our volunteers, and they are, most of them are all here today. First, we have Henry Bellard. There he is. We have Odie Barben. Sasha Belasov, who's from Russia. Lynn Eves. Bill Elliott. Roger Melton. Jackie Neff. Marina Navikova, also from Russia. Paul Roberts. Our senior steward. Lance Tyler. And Ramona Saragosa. And these are your Citizen on Patrol. And obviously, those that are original from Russia, they live here now permanently. So I would like to give them a hand of applause. Again, thank you very much for the work that you do for us, and thank you for coming out now today. And I hope that you enjoyed the rest of the City Council meeting.
And from the council, thank you all. Is there something special about 10 years? Are they forced out at 10 years, or is that not the tradition?
No, I believe that they chose to leave. I think they had enough of us.
Yeah, it was just kind of a coincidence that both of our 10-year service retired at the same time. But we welcome all of you to our city and thank you so much for the service you provide to our citizens. Thank you. Now we have item number one, a public hearing on Council Bill O-2011-01. This is the beginning of the new year. First reading and setting a second reading for January 25. This is pertaining to class action claims or from claims for refunds of fees or taxes going back more than one year. Mr. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item before you tonight is an ordinance to amend certain of our claims procedures to make them more consistent over all types of claims. There are certain claims that are not covered by the typical Torque Claims Act requirements, but the cities are authorized to adopt their own ordinance to institute claims procedures applicable to those actions. What this ordinance does is just apply the very same procedures to every type of other claim that's not otherwise covered by the Torque Claims Act. One other aspect as mentioned is that it will affect the presentation of class action claims by requiring that they be presented individually with verifications by each member of the class. So that would reduce the city's exposure to the sort of class actions that you sometimes read about, where one representative comes forward and then there's a massive, expensive campaign to advertise and come forward with additional claims. So this would reduce the city's exposure and cost of defense of certain of those claims. What motivated this, well, two things maybe. This type of ordinance has been under discussion with the City Attorney's Department. It recently came to the forefront due to a class action claim that certain cities are facing. And there's a claim that has to do with internet data plans or phone data plans, and there are taxation under certain cities' utility users tax. We don't have that situation in our city. But in thinking about those types of claims that the city potentially could face, it seemed reasonable to apply these standards. And so the recommendation of staff and the City Attorney's Office is to adopt Council Bill O-2011-01 on first reading. Set the second reading for January 25. Happy to answer any further questions, but I don't have anything further to add to the staff report at this time.
Are there any questions? If not, I believe the appropriate motion would be to request the clerk to read by title only, or that's next time. Okay, so what, help us out here.
Well, after the public hearing, then you would introduce it on first reading.
Okay.
And then set the second reading for the next meeting.
And then we'll go through all that other stuff.
Correct.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak on this topic? Tom, you're not here for this? Okay. Okay, it looks like we don't have any takers, so I'll close the public hearing. Now, does someone have a motion?
I will move Council Bill O-2011-01 with the first reading and set for second reading for January 25.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it is approved unanimously. Now we move to item number two, another public hearing on Council Bill R-2011-01. Because this is, is this an RDA issue? Because it's called R instead of... Resolution instead of an ordinance, okay. So this is the first resolution of the year. So this is the first resolution of the year, authorizing the sale of property commonly known as the Allen Break Estate. This came up last year and was stalled until now. So, City Manager, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Again, back on December 14 of last year, the city council did adopt the resolution number 2675 to sell the Allen Break Estate. And it's a process that required that we had to have public hearing for any citizen have opportunity to provide any concern for the city to sell that property. That's it.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I could just add that this does not require the sale. It simply authorizes staff to go forward with the process. Ultimately, the city council would be involved with approving any sale and the terms and price of the property at a future date.
Okay, so, for example, if we listed it for 25 cents and someone took us up on it, we wouldn't have to take the deal?
Correct.
Okay. So are there any questions from the council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is open. Any comments from the public? Allen Break Estate, going once. Okay, not hearing any comments, we'll close. Are you the public?
Nope.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And Councilman Brower.
Just a quick comment. For those that may not have followed what we did last December, having been around through the entire evolution of this purchase and parcel, just wanted to reiterate a few facts. The city bought this along with some other property back in 1995 and had multiple efforts to do everything from making it part of the park, to make it a community center, to use it for different city events, and nothing quite was able to materialize that would fulfill any of those visions for those specific functions. And so it's not for a lack of vision or a lack of trying that we've come to this decision, but based on input from many sources, including the Parks Committee, I think we all agree this is probably the best direction to go based on the extensive history we've had. So just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Looks like it's just shy of one acre. And the parcel that was obtained by the city a number of years ago was, how many acres? Sixty-ish? Okay, so this is just selling the front property?
Yes, yes. We subdivided it into three parcels, and we only sell one parcel.
Okay. Most of it is open space adjacent to the park.
Yes, it's part of Hutter Creek's park.
Yeah, and then there's a property also along the street that we're not currently...
That we're not selling it, correct.
Selling because they want to hold on to it for a while. So is there any comment from the council? Well, I guess then what we need is a motion to move forward.
I'll make a motion that we move Resolution 2011-01, authorizing the sale of the Allen Break Estate property.
I'll second that. Okay, is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it is approved unanimously. Now we move on to item three, another public hearing, Council Bill R-2011-02, determining costs related to the fall 2010 weed abatement program. Mr. Gray, Fire Department.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm before you again for our twice yearly, twice yearly, twice yearly weed abatement. This is our fall weed abatement. Let me put this out of the way so I don't drop it. We, in your package, you have the figures that we've taken, the documentation that we have in Exhibit A, B, and C. Basically, in a nutshell, we start, as you know, twice a year, we do weed abatement. The fall weed abatement started in September. We had 220 properties. Of those, 161 needed some type of abatement. Again, the deadline came, second inspections come as to whether or not the homeowners or the property owners of those parcels took care of the weeds. If they hadn't, a contractor was sent out. And ultimately, out of all those, the ones that have not been cleared for payment, there's 18 of them, and in your package you have those 18. So this evening, we're just asking that you adopt these report of costs and the accompanying facts that we have here and pass the resolution establishing that assessments and liens be put on those properties.
Question, is collection of these weed abatement fees typically an issue? I see quite a number, I think you said 18, that have not paid, and it's January 11, so I understand we have a ways to go, but is this pretty typical business, or do we run into challenges?
No, it's typical, and the, you know, the contractor's paid through the city funds, and then as the lien is put on the property, and then the property owner, at time of whether he's, when he goes to pay his taxes or ultimately the property is sold, then the money will be returned to the city.
And then this occurs in the spring as well?
Right.
And when you do the site visits in the spring?
When does it start, Jim?
It starts in April.
Okay. Well, it's important and it has to be done. I'll make that a motion that we accept this report.
I'll second it. Oh, we have to have a public hearing. You'd think after five years I'd get this figured out, so, okay. If you will hold your motion in abeyance. Okay, let's have the public hearing. Would anybody like to come up and comment on weed abatement for the fall program? Okay, no takers, so the public hearing is closed. Now, the motion.
I move that the weed abatement report be accepted.
I'll second it. Okay, is there any opposition? Seeing none, it's approved also unanimously.
That included the resolution.
Yes, the resolution and the recommendation and the whole, the whole thing. Okay, now we have the consent calendar, items four through six. I perused the demands register and see no conflicting items for my side. I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion of it? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Go on to old business, item number seven, renewal of our emergency declaration, Resolution Number 2677, with comment, I guess, by City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and this is just to go with the state. The state declared a state in emergency, and we just wait till they will lift that declaration. So, but at this point, we pretty much, for the city of Loma Linda, we don't have the emergency anymore. Any additional work that require, I will go out to bid, and we'll come back to the city council for approving the contract that needing in the future. For example, we have to replace the storm rain at the northeast corner of Barton and Campus. We had to remove the dirt from four, three detention basin and one retention basin. We said to do that. So I will bid it and bring it back to the city council to water contract.
Mr. City Manager, could you give a kind of a brief summary of where we are with the cleanup process? I spoke with you earlier this week about some inquiries that I've had about the dirt on the streets and so forth, and in the event people are watching, I think that might be helpful.
Yes, sir. As you can see, we pretty much open up every street that we close in the city of Loma Linda. In addition to that, we received an assistance from California Commission, what CCC stand for? Conservation, I'm sorry. Thirty-seven of them wished to help us with the hand crew, remove the dirt from the sidewalk in front of some private property and the landscape medians here, right here on Barton Road. They've been doing that for the past week, and they plan to continue to do that for this week also. We have increased the street sweeper, sweeping the street. You will see a lot more of them this week because it's dry up now. Last week, we cannot do it because we have rain and the mud can still wet. So we've been increasing that effort this week. Last week and this week, we have been pumping the water out of the detention basin. The reason for that is to increase the holding capacity out of those detention basin. We have been doing investigation on how are we going to remove the dirt from the basin and where we're going to take it to. So that's coming up, and I'm preparing a plan for that, and we'll go out to bid. The same thing with the storm rain at Campus and Barton Road. We completed the preparation, the plan, and because it's a small project, I will go with an informal bid, like get three to five bid, and bring it back to the city council. Again, I have to thank you Public Works Crew, Fire Department Crew for the assistance, and the county sheriff will help us a lot with the traffic control and so forth.
And one more specific question that was posed to me just this morning is, along particularly Mountain View, there are still weeds and sticks and stuff hanging around signs, and there's, where there was flooding, there's still a lot of dirt where there used to be grass. Is that part of the plan to address that as well?
Yes, sir. We got a clean on it.
Okay, thank you.
But right now, I want to take care of the homeowner who asked us to help, so we're helping him.
Just a quick question, have you gotten down to mud yet in the catch basins, or are you still...
The catch basin, yes. We did hire a contractor to pump out the dirt and mud from the catch basin, yes.
No, I meant you were pumping out the water. Did you reach the mud level yet?
He's talking about detention basins at this point.
On Richardson Basin, yes. On Mountain View, no, not yet. There's still some water in there.
A catch basin is the street drain on the side, so.
Got it. I was just curious if you were able to tell how much mud and dirt was in there.
A quick estimate between the three big basin is 75,000 cubic yard. And it's going to cost between $10 to $11 per cubic yard to haul it out.
And what if someone gets a contract and it turns out there's only 2,000 yards?
What we do is...
Do we get a discount?
No, we get a lump sum. We give them the map, the plan, and have at it.
So why not underestimate, then?
Well, we give them the map, that's why we're going to, this is my quick estimate, but the contractor have opportunity to estimate themselves. We give them all the information, and right now, we're looking for a site that's closer so that we don't have to haul it very far, and which in turn reduce the cost for hauling it.
How do you know when you're at the bottom of a detention basin? Because it's like sweeping the desert. How do you know when you're done?
No, it's, we have a rock underneath there, so, and we have the topo, existing topo of the basin.
I want to also extend my appreciation publicly to the Public Works Department. I've had a number of friends and citizens that have talked with me and have been frankly very impressed with how hard they worked in that first night, they worked through the night. And a number of people have commented how impressed they were and how friendly the workers were in that they believe that it was city government looking very good to them, and they appreciated the help. So I'm not sure who's here representing Public Works, but kudos.
And the Fire Department as well to...
And the Fire Department, thank you.
Shoring up, shoring up properties and putting out visquing.
Absolutely.
Great, great work.
Agree and echo those thoughts. Just a quick observation, when we've looked at our budgets the last number of years and talked about our rainy day fund, not sure many of us envisioned that it would truly go for a rainy day, but here we are.
And it's the last time I invite my brother from Seattle to come down in December.
And let me add one thing that, I'm sorry...
When he comes in July, it rains, too.
We will file a claim to the state, Debris over here, and hopefully we'll get 75% of the city expenditures. Being the state is broke, I don't know when we'll get the money, but we are hoping.
He'll get it from our redevelopment agency, it looks like.
So the staff recommend that the city council renew the Resolution Number 2677.
I move we renew Resolution Number 2677.
So move, or second?
Okay, do we need to recite what's contained in it, or the resolution has all of that in it? Okay.
You don't need to go through the same findings, we're just continuing that, and the code requires that you renew it every two weeks until you determine there's no further need.
Okay, any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, we have five out of five votes. There's no new business, are there any reports of councilmen?
Just a couple of quick comments. With the recent flooding and so forth, I think it does give us an opportunity to look back a little bit, and speaking of some of the things that I think our local city government does do well, you know, there's a lot of individuals that over a 20-year span worked hard to get the flood control project enacted on San Timoteo Creek. And it's amazing, to my knowledge, there are very little, if any, flooding issues in what had traditionally been the flood area from San Timoteo with this recent event, and you can't help but think what would have happened without that project. And you look back at the videos and pictures from 1969 and see the extensive damage and even death that resulted. And, you know, it's one of those things that at least we as a community, I think, can be proud of and be glad that a long-term plan was enacted on that. The other, just quick observation on that, some of those funds, as I understand, it actually came through earmarks because they didn't meet certain other criteria, so it gets back to that debate. One man's pork may be another man's, you know, vital project, does at least give you food for thought. Then the other, just a quick comment, listening to the Citizen Patrol background of the individuals tonight, can't help but always be impressed, you know, the fascinating background and experience of so many people in this community, it's amazing.
Yeah, we can be thankful that we didn't have floods in the south and the north side of town. When we were tearing down one of the homes on the north side, when we took the material off the walls, we found that there was mud caked inside the walls up to about four feet. So that's how high the water has been, and the mud with the water seeped into the walls of the houses. So I don't know whether mud is very insulating or not, but I don't think so. Okay, any other reports, councilmen? Are there any reports of officers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Item number eight.
I do have a couple slides, and Joe will queue up for us there. I have a brief report tonight of a project and a concept that the Fire Department's been working on with the council, Fire Ad-Hoc Committee, a concept that we think will be mutually beneficial to our fire department and community, along with neighboring jurisdiction, the city of Colton. In this concept, it kind of answers one of the challenges that most small, small fire departments like ours and our neighbors face, is that you have limited resources, and when it comes to your command structure, your chief officer, staff, you put your emphasis and priority of those personnel with a response, the safety and the 24-hour shift coverage. The diagram you see in front of you kind of describes both of our command structures. They're virtually the same in both communities, and it does show that emphasis on the three circles on the bottom for both of our organizations. You'll see a battalion chief, chief for the A, B, and C shifts, and we both staff the same. This concept... This concept asks the question, when you're looking at program management, meeting mandates, and also the response requirements, all those things happen from that shift position. Is there to be a benefit if we could collaborate on the response side and move some personnel to daytime staff functions and operations to enhance our ability to meet some of our program management and mandated requirements from a management perspective that both of our organizations face? The next slide, Joe, indicates what that concept would look like. What you would see there would be the opportunity for our organization as well as theirs to move one of our chief officers from a 24-hour or 48-hour shift assignment to a daytime 40-hour week with a focus on, again, the staff work, program management, and collaborate with our battalion chiefs in terms of the response duties and running the battalion and crews down the road on a daily basis. I think this, again, in an environment where neither one of us are, we all be challenged to add that element to our departments independently, certainly cost prohibitive. We're just not in a point where we could do that. It creates that opportunity, that working together on the response side creates that opportunity at a budget-neutral point to bring that element to our department. So, we think that's a big opportunity for us and certainly something that we can do only with the help of a neighbor. And uniquely so in that their Fire Department has the exact same work schedule as ours, the exact same shift alignment in that their A shift, their A platoon, their B platoon, and their C platoon happen to follow on the exact days that ours do as well. In addition, I would also fall back to a long history of our departments working very closely together and certainly a culture of our personnel working very seamlessly together. In fact, when our battalion chiefs are operating incidents and scenes right now and a second or third alarm comes in that requires a battalion chief, it is these same chief officers that do come into our community already and vice versa, we go into theirs and function on an automatic aid response already with each other very closely. So, it's our feeling like this would be fairly seamless and we're looking forward to that opportunity. Again, this has been something we have met with the Ad-Hoc Committee and the City Manager to give some guidance and input to bring this model to you tonight. And one other important element that isn't necessarily reflected on the diagram, but one of the challenges that we've been, I think, has been on our priority list has been that of a dedicated drill ground and training tower in our town. Piece we haven't been able to get to yet. With this concept, the City of Colton has also made available the use of their dedicated drill ground and tower and the priority within those shift battalion chiefs during their day that we would work our companies through a rotation to get companies into the training site and drill ground. And that is alone is a huge benefit and as the Ad-Hoc Committee could attest, something we've been trying to achieve for two or three years now. And this opens a door that really means a lot to our training program as well. So, that concludes my brief report tonight and I'm open to any questions you might have.
I have a question. For perspective, how many stations are there in the combined two cities?
There are six.
So, we have two and they have four.
Yes.
If you had a city with 100 stations, how many stations would one battalion chief be expected to cover?
Eight to 10 probably is a textbook.
So, six wouldn't be a big stressor.
No, which also is part of creating that unique opportunity and you look at the footprint and geographic area of that six- nation area and we are really reasonably the size of a single battalion.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't have a question but a comment. I had the opportunity to meet earlier with Chief Bender to discuss this proposal and my comment would be that, you know, particularly in times of challenging economy and finances in terms of budgets in cities, I think collaborative partnerships are, have the potential to bring some efficiencies that they're worth looking into and I strongly support and endorse that And so, I'm supportive of this arrangement. The one thing that the chief and I did briefly discuss is when we add to the upper levels of bureaucracy, I, even one person, I like to know what does success look like and if we can develop and Chief Bender seemed to think we can work on identifying some simple metrics that would enable us to understand, are there efficiencies? Is this more effective? So, that we can measure effectiveness and start this on a trial basis, take a look and see if it's working and then enhance it so that it does work if it hasn't. So, I would express my support for this concept with those clarifications.
I would only add that besides clearly helping us with managing personnel, if there's any way to continue to work on this to not make it budget-neutral but actually save us some money somehow at this point. It sounds to me like we're not actually saving money if I'm not mistaken.
There's actually been some discussion of that in the Ad-Hoc Committee for long-term plans with retirements and other things down the road, which ultimately I think would benefit financially and fiscally. But on the long-term, there's also the possibility of even looking at a greater collaboration of resources just because of the, you know, starting out kind of small and seeing how it goes, but there are some other opportunities where we could even potentially save more and get more in return for it too. So, those are some of the things that we've actually discussed in the Ad-Hoc Committee.
I think on Councilman Pesky, on that point, we would look at this as a pilot, a first step in evaluating if we're successful here, what other opportunities might exist down that path you're discussing. So, I think we kind of look at this as a first step and evaluate what other opportunities we might leverage to mutually beneficial moving forward.
So, this was a report. There's no vote or anything?
No, sir. Again, yourself and Councilman Duper is the Ad-Hoc Committee, again, working fairly regularly, reporting in there, getting guidance there. It was, again, the request of the Ad-Hoc Committee just to share where we are with the entire council and the community in this venue. So, as we look at what steps this might take, we will continue to work with the Ad-Hoc Committee and City Manager very closely with each step of this process and we'll report back into the entire council as identified points as directed by yourself.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
And then I saw the Fire Chief Hendricks is here from the City of Colton. He's had to present this to his council and get their blessing too, so.
The one element that Chief Hendricks needs to promote, we had a culture where our command staff historically had been entirely division chiefs. Their command staff had been battalion chiefs along with their fire chief. So, we have the, I guess, the good fortune, we did reclassify our chief officers to battalion chiefs when we added the 24-hour shift schedule concept. Historically, they had been 40-hour personnel with recall requirements, a whole other host of things, and we simplified that with the 24-hour shift schedule. So, the division chief description and job classification still exists in our system. So, that's, we're already built for this. What they face is now taking to the council that job description to get that job description approved. Certainly, the response and coverage in behind each other is our agreements, I think our departments have done fairly consistently through the years off and on, so, but that element is something that he has to take his counsel as a matter of regular business to get that job classification approved in his city and looking forward to next month to solidifying that on their side.
Okay, sounds like there's general support from the council.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Okay, that takes us to the end of our city council agenda.
We have one more staff report.
Okay, one more.
Mine is just in a couple of announcements. The first is that I wanted to remind the council and the public that we will be having a public workshop next Wednesday, the 19th of January, as part of our regular planning commission agenda. We will have a short review of a project starting at 7:00. We hope to be able to jump into the workshop at 7:30. The workshop is on the green building code that was recently adopted by the state and by the city. We'll also briefly be touching on the residential code, which is also new, and the property maintenance codes. We felt that this was a good opportunity to hopefully educate some of our residential population as well as our large stakeholders and let them know how this all ties in with some of the other efforts that we're doing on a regional basis for greenhouse gas emissions and trying to reduce our carbon footprint. The green building code is designed to work in tandem with that. And I know that our planning commission is eager to get input from our stakeholders and maybe find out from some other cities how they're doing and the things that are working and the things that aren't and whether or not it's appropriate to raise the bar and maybe on a voluntary basis, see if we can institute some additional programs that will help our environment and make us a little bit more energy efficient. The other reminder is that we are still working on the development code and I just want to remind the public that the planning commission typically reviews the development code at each of their meetings, chapter by chapter. For this workshop, we'll be delaying the next round of development code reviews. I think the workshop is going to take some time, so we're adjusting the schedule to accommodate that. But the public is certainly encouraged and more than welcome to attend the meetings and to be involved in the development code update and we hope that we are able to get plenty of input. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other reports of officers? Okay, then we are adjourned and it's time for the redevelopment agency.
We'll convene the redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This is the oral reports portion, the public participation. Is anyone willing to or has any desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll continue. First item is the minutes of our December 14, 2010 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do I hear any opposition? Hearing none, so moved. Then item number two, we've already approved during the regular city council meeting, which was the Chamber of Commerce quarterly report and request for disbursement of funds pursuant to agreement with the agency. And I think we've already approved that, so we don't need to move it.
We're going to approve it from our perspective.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do it. So, do I hear a motion?
I moved.
I'll second that after reading it, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do I hear any opposition? Seeing none, so moved. Any reports? Hearing none. I would just wanted to add that we're not quite at the six-month anniversary, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work of all the council members. It's been a new council in the last six months and it has been extremely peaceful and extremely rewarding to have a council that actually does a very good job of working together. And I've heard plenty of comments from the residents watching and talking to us that it's been enjoyable to watch the council meetings and see how well we work together. And I really appreciate everyone's participation and it really is fun to be up here with all of you, so I just want to let you know that. I guess we are adjourned.